Good evening. It is Monday, November 27th, and I call the Maple Plains City Council Meeting to order. Please stand and join us in the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am looking for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Cahill. Any further discussion?
I would like to remove the August 28th minutes from the consent agenda, please.
Okay. We'll pull the August 28th minutes from the consent agenda.
I would like to pull February 6th, line item B, line item F, 23rd Business Meeting, and Pay Request Number Two, letter J. Just for question and comment.
Okay.
I also have some questions on the accounts payable.
Accounts payable. Okay. All right, we will pull letters A, B, E, F, and J from the consent agenda. With that, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with those changes. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, all opposed, motion carries. All right. At this time, we have something very special this evening, so I'm going to switch to the other microphone. Good evening, and welcome on behalf of the entire City Council. We want to thank you all for being here tonight for the presentation of the Good Neighbor Award. We are grateful to each person who nominated someone to receive this award. We appreciate the work that so many residents do to make Maple Plains shine. Tonight, it is our honor to get to honor just one person, and that is our good neighbor for 2017, Carol Cheswick. Carol, would you please come forward?
I'm going to talk a little bit about you.
Oh, no.
All right. So Carol is retired, but serves as a full-time volunteer. For decades, Carol has freely given of her time and energy, not only in Maple Plains, but also in neighboring cities. Carol has served on the Maple Plains Days Committee, where she co-chaired the car show. She has served on the West Hennepin Chamber of Commerce and held the position of Secretary. Carol was instrumental in getting the bylaws up to date. She presently is a community member on the chamber. She has served as an election judge for the past few years, most recently as lead judge, and continues to facilitate judges' get-togethers. She was the co-chair of HeartSafe, and because of her work, Maple Plains is a heart-safe city, and was recognized by Governor Dayton as being one of the first 100 cities to earn this title, all while battling breast cancer. Carol also reactivated the Maple Plains J.C.s and, as president, incorporated the city of Long Lake, forming the Maple Plains Long Lake J.C.s. She has volunteered at the West Tonka Historical Society, where she assisted in the purchase and setup of computer technology. Carol served on the West Hennepin Pioneer Association and led the way in digitizing and archiving documents. She currently volunteers at Lake Minnetonka Shores, otherwise known as Presbyterian Homes, in the Media Center. She also volunteers countless hours at The Langdon, managing the store, where proceeds are donated to local causes, some of which are in our own Maple Plains. I've had the privilege to serve alongside Carol in some of her roles. Her life exemplifies what it means to be a good neighbor. She's always willing to lend a hand and make a difference whenever possible. For all these reasons and so many more, it is my honor, on behalf of the Maple Plains City Council, to present Carol Cheswick with the 2017 Maple Plains Good Neighbor Award.
Would you like to say anything?
Oh, I don't know. Usually, it's those of you who know me, I don't have any trouble talking, but tonight, I think I do. I'd like to thank you. I'm very honored. This is truly an honor to receive this. As you've read off all of these things that I've been doing and still doing some of them, I thought, man, I didn't realize I'd been that busy. I have to thank Lee and my brother and my daughters, who weren't able to come tonight, but for putting up with me, because I'm not home a whole lot, too busy working with others. I guess if I'm to leave one day, I'd like to leave the legacy of myself behind, that I made a difference in my community as well as the surrounding communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carol, for making the difference. I'd like to invite the council forward, and we're going to do a picture, please.
Do you want to take my ear off?
You want to?
All right, as long as we don't have to call 911.
I'm here.
I know him. Sorry, we're going back under the wall. Is that okay? her. Feel free to leave if you like, or you are welcome to stay, as well as we'll continue on with our City Council meeting. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have pulled items A, B, E, F, and J, so I'm looking for a motion to approve items C, D, G, H, and I.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill to approve C, D, G, H, and I. Looking for a second.
Second.
Second by Broda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will just go through in order, then, of the items that we have pulled from the consent agenda, beginning with A, accounts payable.
I had a couple of questions, Bobby, about a few of these expenditures, and maybe you can just help explain or enlighten us. There's a $570 forensic interview services?
Correct. That's a yearly expense that we have, I believe, I know Gary has it. It's for access to some services that we have with Corner House, which is a private company that we use with some of our police work that we do. It's a yearly expenditure that we have there. I know Gary can give a better description on exactly what they do.
So Corner House is a very unique service down in downtown Minneapolis by Children's Hospital. They just do forensic exams, interview exams, not physical exam, of young children that are involved in sexual assault or misconduct of any kind, that they're the victim. So instead of having police officers interview them, we bring the child with their parents, and we let the professionals do the interview for young children. So both cities have the same expense, and we do use them more often than we'd like to.
Thank you. There's an expenditure, too, for Earl Anderson Street Maintenance?
Correct. So this is a, this is a payment that we're making and then getting reimbursed by the developer of Maple Plains. I reached out to the developer because we don't have our Oak Street signs or our stop signs up in that development. Reached out to him and said, would you like us to purchase it, and then we will invoice you. We've already sent the invoice. So that's just us with that expenditure, and then we should be reimbursed for that full amount.
Thank you. There's a Met Council expense called Other Consulting?
Yeah, so this is, this is a regular monthly expenditure. This is for our sanitary sewer expenditure. It's, it's, it's a regular total of that amount every month.
Why is that under Other Consulting?
I think it's, it's always been, that's just what it's budgeted under the line item is Other Consulting. It's as if we're saying Met Council is a consulting service that is providing the service of treating our sanitary sewer.
Okay. Then there's an RC Electric LED Lights for $4,000.
Correct. This was a payment that we used. I, we've been pretty aggressively upgrading our lighting within Public Works, and there's a lot of light bulbs, and I've kind of set the policy that if they go out, we will replace them. We've been replacing them throughout the year, as they've been going out. This is more of the same.
Okay, thank you. I also noticed that the payables don't have any planning expenses again this month.
Correct.
We seem to be a little behind on those.
Correct.
Those going to be able to be in by the end of the year?
Yes.
I think we had this problem before, so hopefully you can work with staff on getting those in by the end of the calendar year.
Yep, we've-
They skew numbers if we don't.
No, 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 I'm aware of that, and it's, it's something we'll take care of.
Thank you. That's it.
Any other questions regarding accounts payable? Okay, with that, looking for a motion to approve accounts payable.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Next was City Council Minutes, February 6th, 2017, from the workshop.
Right. Other Business, Line B, Watershed CIP. John Fay shared that the Watershed Capital Improvement Plan was coming out soon. He was asking if any projects should be added for the city of Maple Plains. The council shared that a ravine study is to be completed in the next five years. My recollection is that that was slated for 2018, and it was going to be privately done through engineering and not the watershed itself?
Correct, yep, that is correct. I know that this was the first time it was brought up, I believe, and so I know that it was, we were asking for five-year projects, that that's what the capital improvement plan was. So I think that's where we ended up, but I don't know if that's where we ended up at this meeting at that, at this time.
I'm pretty sure the watershed is thinking we're going to be doing something in 2018.
No, no, I'm aware of that.
Okay, all right.
It's not what the intent of the minutes there is saying.
Are we clear on that, then?
That's all I had on that. I just wanted a clarification.
Do we need a motion on each one of these?
You can do them all at the end.
Okay. All right, looking at City Council Minutes, 8/28/17.
Under Part Three, the BMX track, let's see, second paragraph, where it says, "Council Members Discuss Usage," with Councilmember Cahill noting that it should not be removed based on low usage. I just wanted that to reflect more that, let's see, I even wrote a piece here. It's not that it shouldn't be removed due to low usage, but rather that the low usage is not a valid reason for removal, because we've actually observed it being used daily. So that was what I'd rather it say.
So we will reword?
Yep.
All right, thank you. City Council Minutes, October 23rd, 17.
Okay. Under Seven New Business, Bullet Point Three, Councilmember Fay asked if this is the last year we are renting a toilet for the museum. I asked if it was the last of the year that we were going to be-
Well, like, the last month?
Yeah. We weren't, we weren't going to be renting it anymore.
No.
Not that we weren't going to be renting it anymore. It comes out saying it's like the last year.
Okay.
We're going to be renting it, so it's just done renting the toilet for the year would be better.
Sure.
Okay.
I can make that change?
And then, what would that be, three, four, five? Bullet Point Six, Bobby, you are going to inquire, there was last month's when we got into accounts payable, there was those back-to-back Excel payments that were identical-
Yeah. So I did look that up. There was a, there was a clerical error there that we, we switched around and corrected there. So it shouldn't have been, it was much lower. It was like $300 for one of those line items instead of $2,600 apiece.
So Excel did not get $200 extra dollars?
No, they didn't. We took care of that and then paid the correct amount.
Okay. That's all I had on October 23, Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else on that one? All right. The next was letter J, Pay Request Number Two to Municipal Builders for Well Number Four.
All right, let me find this here. Dan, I got a couple of questions and inquiries. There we go. Is the total controls component of this pay request included in this? That is the hardware and software upgrade, or is that a separate entity?
That's a separate entity.
Okay. And to date, we're under the original quota amount?
Yes.
Okay. Will the, will there be one more RFP then, and that'll be the final RFP, which will include all the retained monies?
I would say yes.
Okay.
There may be, I know there's some items that Public Works are looking at and talking with the contractor about, possibly when they're here adding to the project, so that's something we'll bring back for discussion.
That come in the form of a change order, then?
Correct.
Okay, so that's not the punch list you referred to, that there were some things that needed to be completed in the punch list? This would be on, above and beyond the punch list?
Correct.
Okay. And then, not, page 42, line item 25, this is rather immaterial, but I'm a numbers guy. Backwash tank modifications, I'm assuming that's one unit, one, one entity?
Yes.
Back when we approved last month's pay request, they requested .88 percent, and this month in line, lines F, they're requesting .22 percent, which means they're actually in that line item asking for about $3,500 additional dollars. It's not apparent in the other line item, but I just want to make sure, in the future, we're not paying out of line item F and G, and we're paying out of line item H and I.
Correct, yeah. If you see on, you know, it uses a total of one that they put in to date, so they, they must have made a mistake. This is one that the contractor prepares, so adding the .88 plus .12 adds up to one, so they must have made a mistake.
Yeah, it's not 66, it's like $3,000 or something, so it's like $3,600 too high.
Right, so it's-
Okay.
Yeah.
Or $33,000. Okay. Like I said, most likely immaterial, but that's all I had on Pay Request Number Four.
Okay. With that, I'm looking for a motion to approve City Council Minutes from February 6th, 2017, City Council Minutes from August 28th, 2017, City Council Minutes from October 23rd, 2017, and Pay Request Number Two to Municipal Builders for Well Number Four.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fay.
Taken.
Second by Cahill. Any further discussion?
One point of clarification, and I just wanted to thank staff for catching up on these minutes. I know this has been a nightmare for a few months, but thank you for the extra effort to get caught up.
There'll be more.
Thank you. Okay, with that, looking for a motion to approve those four items. Oh, we already have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Next, moving on to administrative reports, starting with our City Engineer for November.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Attached in your packet is our monthly report, and some of the items that we worked on this past month, our preparation of the payment requests that we just talked about here before the administrative reports, and we also worked on the 2018 street utility improvements, where we prepared for the neighborhood walkthrough meeting, did some preliminary survey, and also worked on the feasibility report that we'll be discussing later tonight. And there's a variety of different miscellaneous items that we worked on, and at this time, I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Engineer? With that, looking for a motion to approve Mr. Boyam's Engineer Report.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Broda, second by Cahill. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Next will be our City Planner.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Over the last month, staff's continued to work on two downtown projects, downtown, the downtown area and in the Gateway area. One of the other things that we worked on was working with Met Council. We asked for an extension to the downtown redevelopment grant, which is a grant that the city was awarded several years ago, and we've asked for several extensions, and the last time we had received a two-year extension, they told us that would be the last extension. When we went back to them, noted that it was expiring at the end of this year, reminded them that Maple Plains is trying really hard to get this project to go, and if we were to lose the 300 and about 75,000 that's still outstanding in that grant, it would really put a, a burden on the city to try to then make up that. And so the Met Council did meet, had to go in front of their committee, and they awarded us a one-year extension to that grant. We'd asked for two, but given the circumstance, they've never given a grant extension this long, so I think it's good that we were able to convince them to get it and still maintain hope that we could utilize that towards this project. So outside of that, just continue to work with staff on some enforcement with outstanding CUPs, CUP items, and then, like I had said, just the couple of meetings we had relating to both the downtown redevelopment project and the Gateway project, so be happy to answer any questions.
I'd have a quick question about that grant you mentioned. What are the requirements for us to fulfill? Do we have to have started development, or does it have to be like-
No, we need to start it.
Okay.
So if we, if we would, if we would start the project, and by start, I mean any, any kind of activity that would be physical activity, or if we were to have a project essentially lined up and teed up, like bid, awarded, and ready to go, shovel-ready essentially, I think we would probably be able to qualify to get that money. So I, I think there's good hope on that, but-
Yeah, a lot of the grant we've actually already spent. So a lot of the grant money was used to acquire some of the property, specifically Olson's. There was a lot of money spent there for that. Kind of the dilemma that we're in is, I mean theoretically, we could spend the money tomorrow, but the dilemma we're in is that the money left aside in that grant is set aside for street reconstruction. So if we decide to reconstruct the street at this time, and then let's say our development goes tomorrow, then we'd have a brand-new street and a whole bunch of big trucks coming and ripping up our new street that we just invested money in. So the trick is, is that we want to try and get the development done and then redo the street immediately afterwards, so we can utilize the grant money. That's going to be tough to do this year, but we bought ourselves another year to figure out how we can either A, extend it, or B, somehow pull off the development and the reconstruction all in one quick time period. So that's the significance there.
Limited to just infrastructure?
This portion is. So our grant is laid out into about five or six different ways are, it's scheduled out, and actually, when we did get our extension, we moved some of the money around of how we would spend that, and so we took more money from, I believe it was street reconstruction, and applied it to land acquisition. But the amount of money that we have, about the 300 and some thousand dollars that we have left, is specifically for street reconstruction, and we're not going to be able to reallocate those funds anywhere else. So, but we've used the vast majority of the grant already to get to where we're at with our downtown development.
Do we have to repay those dollars if we don't make, okay?
Well, it's, I don't believe we have the dollars.
No.
They have it, but they give it to us, like, when it's, when we're going to reconstruct, they give us the dollars, but it's just-
So if it weren't to start next year, we wouldn't lose that money that we've spent on-
No, the initial 500 and some thousand, we've spent, and there isn't a, there isn't a term for repayment on that.
Okay.
They do a better job of writing a contract today than they did seven or eight years ago for this very reason, but we don't have an obligation to repay, and we were in good faith when we spent it. I mean, it was on the project that we told them we were going to spend it on, so.
Okay.
It's a big carrot.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you for your work, and reapplying for that again, and getting it renewed.
It's good that we got it.
Yeah. Any other questions for our engineer? I mean, our planner, excuse me. Okay, with that, looking for a motion to approve our City Planner November Report.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by DeLuca, second by Broda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, West Hennepin Public Safety, October Monthly Report.
Honorable Mayor and Council, before you and in your packet, and online is the October Activity Report for West Hennepin Public Safety. Through October, we've handled 7,520 incidents, 2,625 of them were in Maple Plains, and 3,657 were in Independence. For, for October, we handled 256 in Maple Plains and 346 in Independence. As you can see, we're a little bit down compared to where we were last year at this same time. I, I don't find that cause for alarm. I just think it's, it's kind of the proactive police work that we've been doing consistently over the last, just shy of two years. It's finally, you know, it's kind of settled in. You know, the squads are there, we're out and about, we're more proactive than reactive, and I think that's normal. I think the more that we are out and about, the less likely people are to do things, and, and I think that's a, being down is not cause of concern. I think it's just good work. In regards to October, I highlighted a few of them. On October 7th, this is an Independence case, but I just wanted to bring it up, where, you know, a lot of different cities talk about, there's no need to have police services in the early morning hours, because there's not many people out, not much happens, and 5:19 a.m., a patrol officer's driving down Highway 12, Valley Road, about a mile west of Maple Plains, looks down the road and sees like a suspicious stalled vehicle, pulls in behind it, immediately comes back that the vehicle is stolen out of Minneapolis, does a quick search on it, finds two people inside the vehicle, takes both of them out at gunpoint in the search of them. They both have warrants, possession of methamphetamine, and this is at 5:19 a.m., when all of us are normally sleeping and don't realize things are going on around in our community. So the officer in the search of the vehicle thought, wow, there's a lot of power tools that look really new and don't belong in this vehicle stolen out of Minneapolis. So the officer took them, feeling that they were stolen property, and while the officer was actually entering in the evidence back at the office, about 8:00 a.m., the property owner on Valley Road called in and said somebody broke into his vehicle and stole all his power tools. So not only was it the stolen vehicle, the warrants and everything else that I mentioned, they're also prowling in the rural area, stealing people's stuff out of their vehicles. So just wanted to commend Officer Thompson for being out driving around when there isn't a lot of traffic out there, but being observant on that, and it was a big, big case. We didn't solve if they stole it or not, but they were in possession of it. On October 9th, in the 5,000 block of Main Street East, Maple Plains, this is kind of a humorous one, we got called, reported that somebody was doing donuts or circles in the parking lot of the church, and that there were juveniles riding around in the bed of a car. Found out that a 21-year-old female driver from Maple Plains had just failed her driver's test, so she was out there practicing with her 23-year-old male from Medina, who happened to just be sitting in the bed of a pickup truck, watching her practice, her turns, and backing up, and parallel parking. So there were no donuts, and there was no cause of concern, but it is kind of a humorous case that we had. October 11th, 1500 Block, Maple Plains, the park-and-ride that we have, we're just on routine patrol, and then there's, during the day, and we found a person sleeping in the car that didn't look, didn't look right, and made contact with the person, found out it was a 16-year-old kid who was skipping school without his parents' permission, so he didn't want to go to school, so he went to the parking lot, parked his car, and went to sleep. Needless to say, mom was contacted, and he was brought back to school, and they're working out the issue of the truancy on that particular case. October 16th, kind of a big case for Maple Plains, it's commending your local fire department. Collision Corner had a, a moderate fire in their paint booth, and by all accounts, I did respond to it, but from what I'm told, the people that were first arriving, you could not see Collision Corner from two blocks away. So most of us saw it later on hand, but there was that much smoke going on coming out of that fire of paint booth, that you couldn't even see the, the whole block area in there. So not only did the firefighters do their job and help put out the fire, but so did the employees. I was talking to the owner, and he's, he had mentioned to me how much money he'd just spent on reconditioning his 12 fire extinguishers earlier in the month, and all 12 of them got burned up by his staff by continuing to spray the fire extinguisher at the flames. They also used a massive commercial-grade power washer that they were using, so everybody was accounted for, nobody got hurt, a lot of great work by our, our police and our fire department, and, you know, soon they'll be back with their paint booth up and running full again, and just, just a good cooperative effort in emergency management in, in Maple Plains Fire and our police department. On October 23rd, we had a theft in the 5,000 block of Main Street in Maple Plains. The male party returned to find that his key to his bedroom and his safe had been stolen. He's having some issues with his girlfriend, his ex-girlfriend not moving out, and she later admitted she knew where the safe was. We ended up searching the residence and found it hidden in the garage, so that she was eventually charged with theft, and pending complaint on that, because she was the only one who knew where the key was, and she knew where the safe was. Put two and two together, she- It's put two and two together, she stole it. On October 26th, the 53 and 100 Block, Highway 12 in Maple Plain, we had a domestic assault, where a 34-year-old male was in an argument with a female. The female threw a lighter at the male, and the male pushed her down. The male was arrested and transported to Hennepin County Jail. On October 28th, we had a second-degree DWI vehicle crash at Baker Park and Highway 12 in Maple Plain. The vehicle went into the ditch, eventually then striking the Holiday Gas Station parking lot, sign area in there, on the male, or the female party out of Maple Plain was arrested for DWI and tested a .27 on a breath alcohol concentration. She was arrested for secondary DWI and open bottle. That kind of summarizes October Activity Report. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you wish, but things are going well.
Any questions for the chief? All right. With that, looking for a motion to approve the West Hennepin Public Safety Report.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fay.
Second.
Second by Cahill. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. All right, motion carries. Next, Public Works November Monthly Report.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Staff has been busy with some seasonal projects that include, they've prepared the snowplow equipment for snow removal, which is a good thing at this time of year. Preparation for tree lighting, as you go around town, you will see a lot of the lights already up. This Saturday, we do have our View Santa, I'm sure we'll mention it a few times tonight, but it's on Saturday, starts at 4:40 at Northside Park. Santa is going around to a variety of different neighborhoods as well. You can find the ad information on our website, but there will be a tree lighting ceremony during that time from 5:40 to, or 4:40 to 5:20. So join us there at Northside Park. Also, Public Works has been adjusting our chemical feeds for new well four with the water treatment plant. So there's kind of, we've now got two wells running through the water treatment plant, well three and well four, and so there's been some adjustments that have been made there, but everything is working properly, and so that's a good deal, that's all installed. They cleaned out Clearwell, another well three, well four water treatment plant, there's been significant work there. Working with contractors on the punch list for the remaining items on well four and the water treatment plant. Most of it is complete, a lot of it is in terms of, the total control has already been in, so we've got all new hardware in the water treatment plant already. Well four is operational, we passed the bacteria test that we have to do for our water. And, you know, talking today with our guys, the quality of water in well four is, is really good. One of the issues that we've had plague the city for years is radon levels in well number three and in, in well four, that isn't the case at this time. So the water's been really good that we've found so far. There's been some miscellaneous pothole fillings with cold patch right now, or cold mix. Winterized Northside Park concession stands and ball field irrigation, removed concrete and asphalt debris from the compost site, and dropped off at the recycling center for no charge, so that's a good thing for us, we got to clean some of that up. And the compost site is closed for the year, but we had it going for, I think, three weeks into November, so the weather was good to us this year, but we got to close it down for maintenance at this time, so. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on behalf of Public Works.
Any questions? With that, looking for a motion to approve the Public Works November Monthly Report.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill. For a second.
Second.
Second by Broda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Next, City Administration November Report.
City Administration has been busy with a lot of projects this month, including we sent out sponsorship letters for our city events next year. We worked out the logistics for tonight's award, we sent out utility billing, certification, delinquency notices, finished the community survey results, we sent out renewals for liquor licenses, which will be at the December meeting. Staff has sent out follow-up letters for sign compliance on Highway 12. We met with the downtown developer, interviewed applicants for fire chief, met with Hennepin County regarding the park and ride development, and met with business owners regarding conditional use permit compliance. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any. Any questions?
All right. Looking for a motion to approve the City Administration November Monthly Report.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill. Second by?
Second.
Fay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. All right, motion carries. Next, the City Financial Update.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. As you can look over at the screen here, we do have what's in the packet here, which is the quarterly update, which is a little bit late because we're past the quarter at this time. But our financials look really good at this point on the expenditure end. So our general fund, we spent 86%, and that's up to about last week Wednesday, up to date, so it's not like the end of the third quarter. We spent 86%. That's last week Wednesday. To that point, we'd spent 86% of our general fund. You can see community events are down, obviously, because of the, we didn't have Maple Plain Days this year, we had three individual events that were a little bit more cost, had a little bit more of a cost savings element to it, so we didn't save, spend as much. Our water fund is doing, is doing well at 82% at this point. Some of the things that were added in here that you might not see in your expenditure report is some of the transfers I added in already through this mechanism to kind of show that this is more of our true percentage of where we're at with expenditures. And the same goes for the sewer, stormwater funds. There's some general fund transfers that I added into the percentage here that aren't added, because we haven't done them yet towards the end of the year, which we will have journal entries that we do when ABDO comes through. Our fire is operating very well at 83% as well. And I can get in a little bit more about some of the expenditures. As noted before, our accounting services are a little bit over, just because we had some training happen at the beginning part of the year, so that we were a little bit more self-independent on things like end-of-month and different common financial practices that we have to operate with. Legal services were a little bit higher, just because of the amount of policy revisions that we did. So it was a little bit of an odd year. Normally, we don't go through the entire employee handbook and all the fire department Overall, though, we're doing a really good job with our expenditures. We're on track to meet our budget, which is always a good deal. I talked a little bit about the community fund. Nothing really stands out to me regarding the water, stormwater, or sewer fund at this point, which is good, and the fire looks good. One thing that is to note about the fire is that in this coming year, they're, they have a larger purchase plan for some SCBA, their breathing apparatus equipment, that comes out of their budget, but it's a capital expenditure, so it's not going to reflect our general fund, but it is a larger budget ticket item that will be spent coming up early next year. So if we go into the revenue portion of it, if I can get there. Oh, let's try this. So I kind of just broke down our revenues, so. So currently, our general fund has received 66% of our revenues, which may seem like a red flag at this time of the year, but there are a couple of reasons why. The first reason is that we haven't received all of our tax money, our second half of our tax collection point from property taxes get paid in October, and they haven't been received yet by the city. The other component is our second half of our LGA funds don't get sent out to the cities until mid-December. That's because the state operates on a different budgeting annual year. So they operate from July 1 to June 30. So they pay us once in May, and then once in December. It's called a deferred payment that they use, so they can break it up over two budgeting years, but it's still in the same budgeting year for us. One area of note for the general fund that was really great is, I looked at our revenues that we bring in on things outside of like property taxes and LGA, and we're, we're right where we need to be, we're doing really well in that area. So you'll see that percentage yep from 66% to 100% close by the time ABDO comes out and presents, just because of those two things, LGA from the state and property taxes. But one thing that is kind of nice, and, excuse me, I'm kind of going to praise the police a little bit, is that we budgeted $12,000 for court fines from our police officers, so pulling over people and collecting some revenue. And police has really knocked it out of the ballpark. We've generated $23,000 and apologized at the expense of some of the residents, but good work by our police officers for enforcing the law and generating those extra revenue dollars, so we appreciate that, and that's a good deal. The water fund has currently collected 75%, and you'll see the same with sewer and stormwater, they're kind of in that area. One of the things to take note here is, because we switched to quarterly, this last chunk, we've got three months here where we're not really collecting any revenues off of it, so what'll end up happening here is, we'll collect them in January, and then we'll journal entry it back to this year. So it'll be in this year, it's just, we're not collecting all of our revenues yet till next year, because we're in quarterly now. That's kind of the main thing. There's also some taxes that get allocated to these specific funds, but don't happen until we do some journal entries towards the end. It's not large amounts, but enough that make up some of these percentages that you see a little bit lower than maybe 75%. A lot of that is like delinquent utility billing that's coming up tonight, unfortunately, that's what we have to do, is that we get some taxes sent back over to those funds that should be there, but we're delinquent utilities. That's, that's the update at this time. I'd be happy to answer any questions. A lot of the, just kind of preemptively, because I'm sure you can go through the expenditure report, and there's a few items that may jump out, some of it is just, at this time of year, it usually gets messy with just a lot of journal entries that need to happen to clean up certain funds. It's not that, you know, I try to stay, look at the percentage as a whole, you know, some of it is like, it could be an account where it's a traveling type deal and it's way over, well, there's traveling in, you know, council and then the general fund. Well, if we've been coding everything to council, then obviously, it's not that we're overspending there, we just need to do a better job of making sure that we allocate it to all the proper areas, so. And that all gets cleaned up too at the end of the year. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from City Council regarding the finance report.
Any questions? All right. Thank you for that update. Looking for a motion to approve the City Financial Update.
So moved.
Moved by Broda. For a second.
Second.
Second by Cahill. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the City Financial Update?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Are passing it. Next, we will move into the public hearing for West Hennepin Public Safety implementation of the weapon-mounted cameras. Do you want to talk before we do the public hearing, or?
I'll actually have Gary kind of give a brief overview on, on the weapon-mounted cameras, and then we'll go into public.
Honorable Mayor and Council, before you this evening is the implementation of a weapon-mounted camera system. Late this summer, West Hennepin Public Safety was contacted by a local company in Maple Plain called Veridian Weapon Technologies. Matt Plowman is, is with, is here tonight for Veridian to answer any further questions you may have, but they've developed a weapon-mounted camera system that attaches to an officer's weapon and activates once the weapon is drawn from a holster. It has audio recording as video recording. So it was very intriguing to us to have a local company reach out to us and ask, hey, this is a, a product that we're, we're developed, we'd like you to be a part as one of our pilot program testers and developers, and I really liked the concept of the idea of the weapon-mounted camera. When we talk about events that are low probability but high risk, anything that should occur at the end of an officer's duty firearm or his patrol rifle, those are incidents that we would, if possible, like to capture on video and hear audio what happened at that particular time. We've had some high-profile cases involving body cameras not being turned on in Minnesota, and the technology that they've developed is, they, they put a magnet in the holster, and when that disengages, was the weapon's drawn out and instantly turns on, instantly turns off. That kind of takes out the officer discretion of, did I push the button? Did I push the button? Was it too quick of a dynamic situation where I didn't have time? So we're intrigued by it. Part of the process that we've, that we've learned is, we really work closely with John Thames, our city attorney, and the League of Minnesota Cities. Based upon some new legislation that came out this year, any portable recording device requires that there is public comment to be received by Minnesota State Statute 6286.843 8473 subdivision two. Now, that was, that was kind of new to us. We thought, we were in a pilot project, we weren't purchasing anything that, we could just move forward, test the product, and if we did buy it or purchase it, then we could move forward with the public comment. The League of Minnesota Cities felt that, that implementation or pilot programs is also, requires a public comment, so we've done so last Tuesday, November 21st, at the City of Independence, and we're doing it here tonight. We've posted it on our website, I've created a memo that was posted on October 30th. Tomorrow is the deadline for the public comment after tonight. I can tell you, I have not received any. The City of Independence hasn't received any, and I don't believe you have. I can also explain, that's one bumping into people, they really like the idea, they haven't officially made a comment on it, but it's all been positive of, hey, this is evolving technology, way to go, way, way to step forward and try out something new and see how it works. We like the product. And through that, John, John and I came up with an administrative agreement with Veridian during this pilot program that kind of details all the, all the stuff that we all want to be, make sure we have it in writing, so that's been taken care of. We've also went through our portable recording device policy 450 and made it changes to add the weapon-mounted camera, which is here today, if anybody wanted to see it or look at it. But we'd like to move forward, and if we do move forward with it, which I believe we will, we're going to implement 30% of our officers, so three officers. We will have one of our drug task force officers carrying a weapon-mounted camera. Sergeant Rick Dennison, who's here, will be carrying a weapon-mounted camera, as will Officer Sean Ebling, who'll be a patrol officer carrying it. They're not randomly chosen, they're all firearms and use of force instructors, who are well-versed on the use of force and their firearms and technology, so that's where we're at with it. I, I'd like to open up, or Mayor, you want to talk about the public comment, but if you have any questions, Matt's here as well. It's just great to work with a local company.
Just one more comment real quick, is that this is a topic that typically we, it would just go before a police commission for voting in approval, but as Gary had mentioned with the specific state statute, it was, it just seemed like a better fit to have a public hearing here instead of at 8 o'clock in the morning at West Hennepin Public Safety in a conference room. So that's why Independence had their public hearing, that's why we are here. There isn't specific council action being required for this, so this would, this is a police commission matter, but we're using this as a placeholder for that public comment, so I just wanted to share that.
And because it is a public hearing, we'll need a motion to open and close, and then offer the microphone for people to speak three times. So with that, I am looking for a motion to open the public hearing for the West Hennepin Public Safety implementation of weapon-mounted cameras.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill. For a second.
Second.
Second by Fay. All in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Same sign. All right, the public hearing is open. At this time, anyone here to speak on the weapon-mounted cameras, please come forward to the microphone.
All right.
I'll just briefly say.
Please state your name again.
Yep, my name is Matthew Plowman, I'm general counsel for Veridian Weapon Technologies, and I just, yeah, I want to say, as part of the hearing, we're very honored to be working with the West Hennepin Public Safety. They are going to be a great, great partner in this pilot project for us, and we're very happy that we're in a position that we have a local, local department that we can work so well with. so well with. The other thing, Gary did a great job talking about some of the advantages of the product. There's the instant-on technology, so that when it's pulled from the holster, it's recording and it doesn't stop recording until it's put back into the holster. So you, you don't have the issue of the body cameras not being turned on. You've also got a better opportunity for an unobstructed view if there is a critical incident than you may have with, with body cameras, that type of a product. And the other thing is, this product in comparison with body cameras is going to create significantly less data that has to be managed, paid for and stored and all of the, the evidence management that goes with that. This is only going to create data in the relatively rare occasions when the gun is drawn from the holster. So we're very happy and happy to answer any questions and...
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Anyone else who would like to speak regarding the implementation of the weapon-mounted cameras? Anyone else who would like to speak regarding the implementation of the weapon-mounted cameras? At this time, I'm looking for a motion then to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Broda.
Second.
Second by Cahill. Any further discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
All right, the public hearing is closed. Next, we will move on to our delinquent utility billing assessment and public hearing.
So before you, or we're going to be looking at the resolution, but this is just a public hearing if anyone has any comment regarding the utility billings certification.
All right, with that, we are looking for a motion to open the public hearing regarding delinquent utility billing assessments.
So moved.
Moved by Fay.
Second.
Second by Broda. Any further discussion? All in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. At this time, the public hearing is open for delinquent utility billing assessment. Anyone here wishing to speak, please come forward to the microphone and state your name and address. Anyone wishing to speak regarding the delinquent utility billing assessment, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak regarding the delinquent utility billing assessment, please come forward. Seeing that there is no one here to speak, I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by Broda. Any further discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing regarding delinquent utility billing?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The public hearing for delinquent utility billing is closed. At this time, we'll move on to new business, Resolution Number 17-1127-01, Certification of Delinquent Utility Bills.
All right, in front of you, the first, this resolution is for delinquent utility billing certification. At this time, we gather a report just to reflect those utility billing counts that are three months or more overdue. And those amounts are, can be certified to the property tax bill to be paid. This chart that shows the properties and amounts is dependent, I guess, what I'm trying to say is we still have collected some of these payments, so the approval should be dependent on if they were paid up to this point.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Okay.
The city ordinance 5319 imposes a penalty when somebody doesn't do this or doesn't pay their utility bills. Is the 10% interest that's charged on that also governed by that same ordinance? Or are we free to alter that?
Theoretically, we're free to alter any of it because it is an ordinance. City Council has the authority to alter it. There may be a cap on what, how high a penalty could go. I'd have to look into that. But I certainly, if it's a city ordinance, the city council holds the authority if they wanted to change that penalty to a higher or lower number, council reserves the right to do so.
Okay. And earlier today, Bobby, you provided council with a listing and a comparison of last year's.
Correct.
Is there a reason, could we put that on our website as part of our transparency?
If that's something that council wishes staff to do, we'd be happy to do so.
And part of what I'm...